Hey.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
I'd like to start our study session with first on the agenda, we have the proposed brownfield redevelopment review. We have almost there. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for giving us this opportunity tonight. Just wanted to run through the brownfield plan that's being presented to you in case you have any questions about the details about it. First, I want to just introduce on the call tonight, we also have our brownfield consultant, T.F. Toxiadis, and also representing the developer, we have Mike Colka and Jenny Doherty from PM Environmental. I don't know if the developer's on it. I don't see him, but.
I can hear it, boys, Jenny.
Okay. But they're here, so they can be of, you know, assistance if you have any questions that we need to.
I'm muted, you please speak.
I couldn't hear you.
Oh, no, I unmuted Jenny, but she keeps muting herself. Well, she's not muted to speak, because if I don't unmute you, you can't unmute yourself.
Okay. So, as you got in your packets, they kind of give you a brief letter introducing it and the resolution that will be needed for tonight, should you decide to approve it. Also, you'll see we have the motion from the minutes of our brownfield meeting where the brownfield board voted to recommend acceptance to the city council. And also, in addition to the plan that you received, we included a brief summary about a little over one page, and it gives you the highlights there of all the details of the project. Tried to, you know, make it easier, kind of get the bullet points. So, it's definitely a much-needed and appreciated project in our city. As you know, the site is 6425 North Telegraph. It's currently the location of a small old gas station that was purchased just within the past couple of years by the developer to clean it up and put a brand-new station there. It does have a confirmed release in the past from several years ago where there was a fuel leakage under a previous owner, so this definitely falls within the parameters of a brownfield project for a new developer to come in and clean up the site and for us to help assist with some funds with that. So, that being said, do you have any questions for us?
Does anybody have questions?
Council chair.
Councilwoman Abella.
Just a quick question, Tom. The one with the Tim Hortons, what is that all about, the $1,800? This would be reimbursement account?
Oh, you're talking about, so you're talking about the budget? We're talking about the new, the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the budget. Yeah, we have, it's a little confusing. We have our brownfield budget on the agenda tonight, too. But that's, that's their annual payment, the amounts on that budget. I think that's what you're asking. That's what we obligated to pay them.
Okay. Thank you. But in terms of this development, the one on Telegraph, I've driven by it, definitely much, much-needed improvement, and I think it'll be a very nice thing for our city, especially, you know, on Telegraph with all the traffic back and forth from different cities. I think it's a great investment for our community.
Any further questions? Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, hi, Tom. Who monitors the cleanup procedure and okay's it for construction?
Well, I'll defer to our consultant on that, T.F. Toxiadis. He can give you better details.
The cleanup that will be required for, in order to prepare the property for redevelopment will be overseen by the developer's environmental consultant, PM Environmental. They have prepared the environmental assessments. They are familiar with the site conditions, and they will oversee the environmental component of the redevelopment to make sure that they are in accordance with state requirements. Once they are completed, the consultant for the developer will prepare invoices from the various contractors. They will be submitted to the brownfield authority, and then the brownfield authority will verify that the quantities and the cost that are presented in the invoices agree with the eligible activities that are included in the brownfield plan.
Yeah, a follow-up on that. Who in the first place came up with the, the plan to clean the site up? Is it mandated by the state or that no construction can be done before it's cleaned up, or is this voluntarily? How's that work? Just curious.
Yeah, there are some activities that have to take place in order to construct the buildings and construct them in a way that meets the developer's environmental due-care requirements, things such as not to expose the users of the property to the contaminated material, that when they do the construction, make sure that any contaminated material are treated according to state required regulations. So, the consultant will be overseeing that, because, yes, there are some due-care requirements. That's a bit different than doing a full remediation, which is not required by the state, but there are environmental due-care requirements they have to meet.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. That's the financial review presentation. It's for the progress of the financial review. Who would like to talk on that?
I think I'm also, can you hear me?
Yep. And I'm muted, too.
Hi, this is Matthew Schenk. Just wanted to introduce Mr. Katner for his presentation, as council knows, with the financial review has begun, and so we wanted to use this opportunity in the study session to provide an update for this review. Obviously, it is a financial review, so Raymond has taken the lead, and my role is merely to assist. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Katner, and we're both available to answer questions at the end.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. You were provided with a letter, I believe, yesterday, so I'm not going to read it to you, but I am going to walk through some of the important points, if you will, as to, you know, where we're at, which is obviously still very early in the process. You passed a resolution into June that had some first steps outlined in there, which primarily involved interviewing city council members and perhaps others, current and former department directors, to, you know, get together a list of what are the priority areas, if you will, the issues. So, we provided that letter to let you know what we heard and also to suggest to you next steps from here as well, as well as you two perhaps, if you differ at all, to outline those next steps. A resolution has been prepared for tonight. It's on your regular agenda, documents that we would need to indeed look into these items and proceed with the process, if you will. Those documents are identified as being from the auditors or from the city administration. Auditors, because they may have it and have it in a complete fashion and be able to get it with greater ease or efficiency than it would take for the city. For example, a download of the general ledger activity could take literally hours of computer processing time, perhaps, to go and get that, especially if it was back several years, whereas the auditors would likely have it right in their file, easy to grab and send. So, that's why you see some items from, from the auditors, from the city, just some simplicity, and, quite honestly, some testing that was done on completeness that we wouldn't have to repeat. The interviews, there were nine people talked to. Mr. Wenzel, we still would like to visit with you when you get a chance, so if you shoot me an email back at your convenience, that would be great. The letter outlines who it is we talked to. We came out with probably 30 topics. You know, you could call it 29 or 31, whatever you want. There were some that were involved, some that were simply mentioned by one person, and others that were, you know, mentioned multiple times. Some of those might have been, for example, PEG monies. Councilperson may have said, "I assume you already talked to X about the PEG monies." Yes, okay, then let's not spend my time talking about that. Let's move on and talk about some other stuff. So, we took that and based upon, I guess, some level of significance evaluation or the number of times or the degree to which it was mentioned, we came up with 10 items. When I say "we," it was Mark along with some discussion with Matt. And it's not 10 items because we want to think for David Letterman or something like that, but just because it was a round number based upon the items that were there. So, in no particular order, there were the PEG fees and the uses of those funds, credit card usage, resolution of audit findings, Act 345 funds and the uses thereof, sources and uses of water sewer fund monies, including the CSO bond collections, city positions and salaries within authorized appropriations, authorized legal services payments, use of city vehicles, building permits and certificates of occupancy, and the pension drop program. So, this is just a preliminary list. Once we start looking at some of the financial documents behind this, some of these things may indeed be issues, and some of them may be nonissues, once we get a look at them. And perhaps, you know, nonissue might mean they are non-financial, but maybe more in the way of performance. But you do have the resolution and the attachments to it with the documents that we would like to receive in order to start moving forward. And moving forward may mean more documents to support perhaps what we're seeing there. There may be more interviews, which could be with the city council members as well to revisit something or to get further details, or it may be somebody within the city administration. I don't know where it's going until we get the documents and indeed can, can move this to the next step. So, with that, I would be glad, Ms. Chair, to address any questions or to let you get on with the rest of your meeting.
Okay. At this time, we have Councilman Constance has a question, and then Mayor is next. Go ahead, Councilman Constance.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mark, for being here. My questions are the cost thus far, the really broad list of items requested. In your letter that I got yesterday, it states, for example, under, on page 2, under item 7, authorized legal service payments to mayor's attorneys, including Mr. Miyake's continued billing despite not being reappointed. I mean, is that from you, or is that? That's more legal argument. And then, how many years are you going to be looking at? What is the cost thus far? What will the cost be per year? I really think the council needs to discuss and vote the breadth of this audit, what we're going to look at, what we're not. Why is, for example, the drop program being reviewed? What is the reason the drop program? The information on who's in the drop is readily available from the police and fire chief or the mayor's office, but what is it that you want to look at, for example, with the drop program? Mark?
Both item, both items seven and 10 that you referred to on the list were items that were mentioned in the interviews with the various people, and so that's how they found themselves on the list. As far as why the number of years were being requested, I don't know necessarily that we're going to be looking into all those years, except, you know, for example, the PEG monies, the issue surrounding that is not just a recent year. That does go back, and it may be simply tracing those revenues, but more importantly, the expenditures in terms of what the expenditures were into those trial balances. If I only, well, and into the general ledger. So, if I only ask for the last year trial balance, then I'm not going to have any details to go back into the transactional details.
Transactional details.
If I only request the last three years of the general ledger, then that means that I'm not going to have available. I don't know if I'm going to trace to it, but I would rather ask for it now than know that I have a probability to need to ask for it later. Transactional detail means that, okay, what actually got charged to an account? Take the PEG monies as an example. If it's just a single line, I haven't looked at your trial balance, I don't know. If there's just a single line for expenditures for the PEG money, what was it? Was it equipment? What equipment? Was it for salaries and benefits, which seem to be part of the question that is being raised? If I don't have those postings, I'm not going to be able to see that. It'll be easily provided in that GL detail, and quite frankly, I would expect that the auditors would have those files readily available, and they'd be easily transferred to us via a portal. I'd rather have it available and not use it than need it and have to slow down or stop the process.
So, Mr. Miyake's billings, the payroll records, which contain our workers' social security numbers and so forth, which by law are confidential, the building questions related to building permits and certifications of occupancy, Act 345 funds and uses thereof. I think this has got to be narrowed a lot, too, before we run up. What are our bills? What is our bill to date?
I just did a billing so that, because it needs to go to Mr. Schenk and it threw the subcontract, so for time through yesterday, July 27th, it was $14,000 something. I don't remember the dollar amount.
Wow.
All right, Mayor, you're next. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, Chair, just before we, before we leave that point, can I just, to Councilman Constance's question, it is way too early in this process to make any assumption about any negative implication from something being on this list. As Mr. Katner indicated, this list is just a highlight of what issues were raised in the initial interviews that warrant some looking at, and it could be that an item like the building permit issue, maybe it is not financial at all, and as a result of the initial documents that are provided, it immediately comes off the list. So, I just want to be clear that there's nothing about casting aspersions on anybody or any department by happening to make this initial preliminary list.
The problem is the cost and the overly broad request, and the council acts as a whole. We discuss and vote, and if one council member or another wants this or that, I, you know, I may want an investigation as to what the city pays to GFL. The council has to discuss this and then come up with a vote and a majority on the scope of this audit, financial audit.
And that's, that's exactly why we're here presenting the results of that first round, so that the council's in a position to hear it, ask questions, and that first round of document requests is on the agenda for council to consider and vote on in your open meeting.
But Mr. Schenk, don't you agree?
That's exactly the process we're trying to lay out for you.
Mr. Schenk, don't you agree? The council has to vote as a whole. What council member 1, 2, 3, or 4 wants individually, that's, that has no legal impact. It's what the council does as a whole.
That's why we're presenting to the council as a whole right now, and why you have a resolution on the agenda to consider. If council votes to amend that resolution or reject that resolution, then this doesn't go forward, but that's why we're here to present and why you have a draft resolution on your agenda for your consideration.
This was originally supposed to be an audit of the, of the PEG money, the cable TV money, and this is going to get very, very, very expensive. Thank you.
We've got Mayor waiting to speak. It was his turn. You've already had your turn. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. I did not get a copy of the letter. I'm the chief executive, chief financial officer. I would think that you would want to include me on all correspondence. We have nothing to hide, but I will tell you right now.
He broke up. I couldn't hear him. Can't hear you, Mr. Mayor.
Can you hear now or not?
Yeah. You broke up, so I didn't get everything that you were saying.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I was, I was just saying that I would like to get a copy of that letter in all future correspondence. As chief financial and executive officer of the city, I should be included on the correspondence. We have nothing to hide. What you will find, however, I wish you had contacted me and we could have established some type of relationship. I am a certified public accountant licensed under the state of Michigan and used to work for Ernst &amp; Young back in the day. I find a lot of the records that you want are not under my particular control. I think we need to talk about, because you're going to have to go to other sources in order to get some of those documents. I don't even, as a mayor, have a right to look at some of those documents. So, you're putting me in a position of having to veto your request if you pass it as is because it's too broad, and it's making requests of records that are not held by anybody, by myself, or anybody that works for me. I also, I didn't get, I was trying to write down the 10 items. Can you repeat those? You said PEG funds, credit cards, audit findings, 345 and uses. I think it was sources and uses of water department funds, something about salaries, and then I couldn't write the rest of them down. Could you repeat those? And give me a copy of the letter, too, please.
If you want, I got a copy of it. Do you want me to mail it to, email it to you right now, Mayor?
Well, I'm at home, so even if you email it, I don't have general access to it right at the moment, but I should be on all correspondence as the chief executive of the city.
Agreed. I'll make sure that, and I'm sending that, I just sent that right now.
But I think to make the record distribution, like you said, I have nothing to hide. Go more smoother. I don't, I didn't catch the CPA's name, but he, you need to contact us so we can talk about who's got the records and how to get them. I think that just makes common sense. I'm surprised you haven't contacted us.
Thank you. Next, I have Keith Myers. Keith Myers, can I?
Yes. Can, yep, can you see me and hear me?
Hold on a minute. Oh, yep, I see you. There you are.
Okay. Just, not speaking as the chief, but as the trustee for the Act 345 pension system and as a member of that Act 345 pension system and as a citizen, I understand two of those 10 relate to some form of the Act 345 police and fire pension system. I'm, I'm concerned because after 12 years as a trustee on that system and monthly meetings over those 12 years, I've seen a total of four council people over that time attend those meetings and ask any such questions about how the pension, the drop, or the monies are dispersed. Now, we're paying as taxpayers, audit firm, to go in and audit and audit of not only the city's records, but of potentially the act, which we already have an audit of. So, I find, I find it concerning that now, 12 years into this, we're going to be paying an outside agency to look at something that was readily available that nobody chose to look at for the last 12 years by attending a meeting and asking any of those questions. So, it is a concern I have as trustee of, of the Act 345, of what the intentions are, why it's being done, and why did no one come to the system during their monthly meetings and ask these questions before we had to go into some type of financial audit and cause an additional burden on our taxpayers? That's all, that's all I had to say. And that's me as a trustee and citizen, not as a representative or speaking on behalf of the board.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or concerns from anyone? Councilwoman Abella.
I'm Chair. I have some serious concerns in regards to this. As you are aware, without reiterating the past, I was not in favor of doing this type of an audit. I was in favor more of a plant Moran route, but that being the case, we've already passed this. I just think right now, I looked at these, there's 10 items here, and each and every one of them will take hours upon hours upon hours of investigation, auditing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, obviously at a cost to the residents of the city. And one of the things that we talked a lot as council members, or some of the council members that had some serious concerns, their biggest concern was the PEG fees is what kept coming up. But now, on this thing here, you've got 10 items, and there are 10 major items. If we're going to look into each and every one of these and go back multiple, multiple years, I have some serious concern as to what the cost of that is going to be, be it to the Raymond group and to the attorneys involved in all this. I have some serious, serious concerns to the cost, and I've asked on multiple occasions for someone, and I realize nobody can give us an accurate figure, no doubt about it, but someone can give us an approximation of what it would cost to do all this. And now that we know we're going to look into possibly 10 items, and each and every one of these is going to have multiple things, you know, sub-items off of that, rough cost of this, I'm really seriously concerned as to how much this is going to cost. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Well, can somebody answer it, if you don't mind?
I've got Mr. Katner here.
Let me suggest something to you. Rather than lay this open to do whatever, you're going to have your agenda items to meet whether you want the 10 items or you want to take, you know, I'm just saying numbers randomly, 1, 6, and 9.
You're cutting off. I don't.
We've got to have people mute themselves out there because you're coming through on our.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Katner, please?
Go ahead.
You can, as, as, as Matt was talking about earlier, you guys are going to have this on your agenda. You can look at it if you want to pick items for further clarification, you can do that. What you can also do is, rather than just leave this wide open for, I think I read something before, the suggestion that it was going to cost millions of dollars. No, I don't think so.
Oh, yes, so.
What you could do is you could initially authorize some dollar amount, right, to say, "We'll do these 10 things as a priority. We'll do three things, whatever it is that you guys decide," and you put a dollar amount with it to say not to exceed X amount of dollars, and when it gets to that point, come back and report to you. Now, if you make that dollar Now, if you make that dollar amount fifteen thousand, we might as well stop right now, right? Because it ain't going to happen. But you don't need to make it a quarter of a million dollars either. You know, you could go to fifty, seventy-five, ninety-nine, whatever amount you guys as those charged with governance decide to do, you can, if you want, put a fence around it. And then, once we start approaching that, we we come back, we report where we're at. If you are satisfied that there's progress being made and you want to authorize additional amount, you can do so. If you choose not to, it's your choice. You, as as the city council, you engaged us. I'm not controlling this process, you are, right? So you tell us what it is you want, and we will do it, all right?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Do we have any?
There was just one, one clarification for a point that the mayor raised. The resolution does speak to a process where if there are records that were requested that are not in the possession of the city or the administration, that the mayor can just certify that those records do not exist. So it was contemplated that there was a possibility that these might not all be within the possession, and we tried to break out the list. So the one list was information that we thought the auditors would have, and then a second list that was to the administration. So hopefully, that at least provides a process. It might not be the ideal process that the mayor requested, but we tried to contemplate that that might occur.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I can't certify, for instance, let's take records from the police and fire pension or even the general government pension. Those are in the possession of the pension board. They are not in the possession, and I don't have access to them. Consequently, I can't certify there is or is not a record because I don't have them in my ownership, and I don't know that. You should have sat down with me before and we could have worked out, and I would have told you, this one you need to go here, this one you need to go there, but you didn't do that. And just saying, I can't, I would be incorrect if I sat there and sent back a note saying that I certify it doesn't exist because I don't know it doesn't exist. You didn't really give me a latitude, in all fairness.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions before we move on to public comment? At this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody out there that has any questions? Please raise your hand.
Madam Chair.
It doesn't look like there's any public comments.
Madam Chair?
Christina, where are you? Go ahead.
Yes, I I'm trying to raise and I couldn't.
Okay.
I just have a question. One of the items is for the auditor to have access to a payroll system. I I want to know under, under what authority does city, not not necessarily you as a city council, does the auditor, does the attorney, does anybody think they have access to a payroll system under a it's not a record that they're looking for, it's access to the payroll system? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Constance, you're
Well, yeah, again, I just think we need to discuss scope of the scope of the audit and and not in the legal business, we would call this a fishing expedition, and and the problem is just the expense. The the information's there, and it's it was reviewed by Plant Moran, who the council hires to do the audit, and Plant Moran is a national CPA firm. They're not going to fudge an audit for City of Dearborn Heights. It's it's just not going to happen. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any public comment at this time? That study session will take a five-minute break, and we'll come back to our regular
Are we staying on the same Zoom call or do you want us to re-log in?
Well, no, this is, we're staying on the same one this time.
This won't take long, and Jeopardy comes on now too, you know.
Jeopardy.
No. Yeah, I'll leave the room. I'll go to other room. Oh, Vince, what the hell are they doing there? Over there in the corner by the olive oil.
Okay, it was iPad two. I have your own mute.
Nobody can see you, but I can hear you. It's Dave's.
That's Dave's? My lights are off?
He says he can hear you.
Hi, Dave's.